Okay, at this time if everyone will please stand for our invitation and our pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Owens is going to lead us in the invitation.
Let us pray. Yes. Gracious Lord, we thank you tonight, Lord, for our gathering. Lord, we thank you, Father, that we were able to be here. Lord bless our meeting tonight. Bless our county, Lord. Father God, we just pray that what we do and say, Lord, will be then the will. But we just thank you for our help tonight, Lord. Thank you for our safe travels tonight, Lord, and be with us as we depart. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no degree in justice or honor.
Okay, at this time I would like to call to all of the regular meaning of Gates County Board of Commissioners for May 24th, 2018. We do not have any minutes because that is done in our first meeting of the month. At this time, we will take a look at the agenda. I do have a couple of changes or additions. Number seven and eight we're going to combine because all that deals with the safety manual. And we were going to add number nine. And that is the vulnerable adult elderly abuse awareness month proclamation. Is there any or adjustments to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
So moved. Second.
Motion made and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, so we'll move right along. Do we have anyone signed up for Knights delegations?
No ma'am.
No, Knights delegations. Okay, the first person on the list is Ann Howell. Ms. Howell, will you please state your name and address? And we do have a five minute.
Okay. Ann Howell, 49 White Oak Road, York. And I am a member of the CAC committee for Gates County. And I have some information I would like to pass out to you that you can follow along with. We have the other committee members here with me tonight, and I'm glad to see them supporting me. And if I can't answer a question that you have, maybe somebody can answer it. I'd just like to give you some of the information of what is required of the CAC members, the training requirements. I believe you have a page of that. Each CAC appointee is required to complete 15 hours of initial training consisting of eight hours classroom training by the regional ombudsman, four hours of facility orientation visits with the regional ombudsman, three hours of independent reading, home study. CAC members are required to complete 10 hours of ongoing education training annually. And we have a training session tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock at the library. We conduct visits with committee as well as independent training visits to the facilities. We must complete a quarterly annual visitation report. We have to make four unannounced visits a year. I believe you have a copy of the form that we use as we go into the nursing home and the assisted living home that we have to, we use that as a guide when we are making our unannounced visit. We must complete committee member activity records. And I believe you have a copy of two records. That is a quarterly report that goes in. And we must attend quarterly meetings, trainings, four times a year. And participate in the completion of an annual report that is presented before the county commissioners each year. And I believe Gates County is one of several that has a full committee. I believe there are four out of the 10 that do not have a complete committee. Some of them need two members on their committee. We have talked about this before. We have tried to get new members for this committee. We have asked, and some will say, "Well, I'll think about it." But they always come back with the answer no. And if you look at this, it doesn't sound like a whole lot to come out of a year's time. But when you have other obligations and getting older, as I am, and getting ready to have a hip replacement, as I am, this takes quite a bit of time. There's a lot of phone calls and readings and things that go on that we really, I'm sure none of us ever get credit for all of those that we do. But I've asked the question, if we did not have a committee to go into the nursing homes, what would take place? And my understanding, and I have some information, that the board of commissioners would participate if there was not enough for a forum to go into the nursing homes. Now, I could say we have tried to get other members. It is a volunteer committee. I realize that. Although I don't think I ever volunteered. I was a member of the family council, and I think I just kind of got shoved into it. And don't really know how to get out of it. And it's not that I mind doing it. I love to be able to go in there with them. But it does get to be quite an ordeal. And we feel that some of the problems is that nobody thinks it's really worth the time and effort to do it when we don't necessarily get a thank you. We've talked about it before. We've mentioned mileage. And I know that you have checked into other counties, and some of them do, and some of them don't. I realize that from the last time. But it certainly would be helpful if you could consider that and let us know that we are appreciated a little bit. I have some reports here. I can't give them to you, but problems that have been and have gone to the state, and the state has answered and been in the nursing home and hopefully solved the problems. But do you have any questions about anything I mentioned?
Well, certainly, we appreciate all that you do in your committee. And it is one of the safeguards to make sure that the clientele is being treated appropriately and that you can go in and be an advocate for them. Because some of them don't have family members.
A lot of them do not have family members. They are from long ways away.
Or they could be right here in the county and still have family business. And that's always sad. And we certainly, I think all of us appreciate that, what you do and all. Anybody have any comments or questions?
I think it's very important what Ms. Howell's brought forward to us about it, certainly. But secondly, it's such an important watch file committee. And that's been my definition ever since I found out about it.
And it is mandated by the state that we have this committee.
Okay, well, thank you. You know, we, we'll see.
May I ask if any other members have any thing they'd like to add?
Well, they would have to come to the podium.
I know, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I think the last time that we discussed this, we did have a vote on it, and the vote failed. But after hearing what Howell had said to us again, I think the time limit for us to bring this up again on the agenda possibly voting it has expired. So we could bring it up on our next agenda, June agenda, and consider the travel claim with the limit that we had the last time. I think it was a maximum of $20 per month or something of that nature. And each member would turn in the travel claim form to show that they did participate in activities for the month. And I would like to see this come on the agenda while I show you.
Okay, I know it has come up before. I'm not sure exactly what the timeframe is, but I know it was voted down. So we'll have to go back in our minutes and to check that. And we can hold a discussion if need be when we're talking about the budget. But it's, we've got to check out the timeframe because we know you, we do have some rules about it. Yeah, something's voted down before we can bring it back up.
Okay, they can see your form until nine days. They might do nine days that you cannot bring up an item that's been voted on again. But I think we've exceeded that.
Okay, we could check.
It was sent an email, and it has exceeded even the four months.
Okay. Okay, thank you. The next person, Joe Pofetto. If you will state your name and address.
My name is Joe Pofetto. I'm at 202 Woolington Road, Gates County, Carolina. Okay. Royal Library Governor Cooper. As I was speaking on behalf of the Christians Baptist Church, I'm asking questions concerning the annual fire inspection. I use as a reference the 2012 North Carolina State Fire Prevention Code, which is sent to me online for the North Carolina Cooperative Insurance House of the State Fire Marshal. The Gates County Fire Inspector stated to me in a very heated call that, quote, "I do not work for the state," end quote, stating as such of being director first of the Gates County Board of Commissioners. Gates County City Manager charges $50 for a fire inspection each year as required once every three years, Page 11, Section 106. There is no payment mentioned in the code. The inspector informed me that the inspection was not accomplished, and he would close the church down. There is nothing in the fire code about quoting a church for not having current fire inspection or for nonpayment of fire inspection mandated by the county. The church does not give a letter from the county stating closure for no inspection or nonpayment. I can think of a few terms, but I'm not thinking of secure. As for the inspection itself, the inspector stated on the Gates County inspection, "Fire extinguisher not near exits and in working order." The reference in paragraph 906.55 states placement away from normal traffic. The reference does not state near fire exits or near exits, which is on the inspection form in italics. This is a misrepresentation of the fire code. When it comes to finding a fire, my question, why wouldn't an individual go toward the fire exit to retrieve a fire extinguisher that will go back to the fire while attempting to get around people trying to exit the building, possibly in a panic? Who here knows, a rhetorical question, who here knows how to use a fire extinguisher without reading the directions? The inspector also suggested a specific fire extinguisher that could be recharged. In paragraph 2.5, a record of high hydropress testing is required. However, it's not cost effective to recharge a fire extinguisher. It is faster and more cost efficient to turn in the old extinguisher to a qualified recycler and purchase a new one. The other concern in fire extinguishers is how to mount according to the weight and type of size required. I do not know which type of fire extinguisher was purchased. The inspector provided two occupancy load signs, one for 165 and one for 56. The location was not specified except for near exit or access, near access doorway. I do not know the occupancy area of the church, so I use the paragraph 1004.7 to determine occupancy load. I do not calculate acquiring or any overflow seating agenda. The seat is 138 inches divided by 18, which is 7.6 persons per bench, rounded down, 7 times 16 equals 122. I'm not sure where the 165 number came from. The notes in this section recommend a smoke detector, electric exercise, and security lights. Although I agree to make that smoke detectors are necessary, there is no rule that requires smoke detectors in churches. Electric exercise, the word serves as the manual, electric exercise, there are no matches or found. The proper terminology for science is eliminated. There is no requirement for illuminated exercise. There are no matches for security lights in the reference. In terms of security, reference to perfection tampering with or prevention of unwanted intrusion. The term lights has only appeared five times in the reference and not constructional security. Where are the elements in church that state that you've heard from other churches concerning fire inspections? I have not been involved in any of these conversations. The county charging $50 and $50 late fee because the inspector stated, quote, "He left several notices." We have two. And the fact that if the inspector sees making of his own code or misrepresentation of the code, I believe all charges and late fees should be dropped. I myself am a compliance inspector for occupational safety health and life safety code. So I know how to read codes. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else on the list? No. Okay, we'll certainly take your, what you said, and see it in your investigation. Okay, administrative reports, we have non-deposits. This is the second meeting of the month. There's no public hearings, you know, no old business. First item on the business is your 1718 budget participation.
That should actually be 1818.
18, that's what I thought.
This is the memorandum that the commissioners have for all of them or in their notebooks. In accordance with the North Carolina Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act, the administration department has assembled the budget requests, revenue estimates, and financial information supplied by various officials, officers, employees, and agencies of Gates County. For these sources, the budget has been prepared for consideration by the Board of Commissioners. The recommended budget is balanced and applies to General Statute 159, Bachelor 11. A copy of the budget has been filed with the clerk to the Board of Commissioners as available for public inspection. Copies are available by news media in Gates County as well as on the Gates County website and the Gates County Public Library. Not earlier than 10 days after the presentation of the budget message and not later than July 1st, it should be read 2018, the Board of Commissioners must adopt a budget ordinance making appropriations, estimating revenues, and levying taxes for the budget year. A public carrying on fiscal year 19 budget is scheduled for Wednesday, June 6, 2018, during the regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting. The information presented in this report should be considered and studied in detail. Additional information will be presented to the Board of Commissioners during the budget work session. Key budget highlights: The total budget is balanced in accordance with North Carolina legal standards. The property tax rate of 76 cents per $100 in assessed value will remain the same with an estimated 97 percent collection rate for property and motor vehicle taxes. The total budget is $15,276,657, of which $11,716,631 is general fund, of which $150,720 is appropriated fund balance. Health insurance rates decreased by 2 percent by switching to the North Carolina League of Municipalities Insurance School, which uses med cause. I am recommending merit raises for all employees that are eligible and were recommended by department heads to receive them. This has been included in the departmental budgets. Included in the budget is funding implementation of year one of the salary study. All employees do not receive a salary increase in year one. Please note, part-time employees and commissioners were not included in the salary study. Part-time salaries will be reviewed in year two. The county manager's salary was reviewed during the salary study with the recommendation being made. No salary changes have been made to the county manager's salary. For fiscal year 19, the appropriate fund balance will be used to fund the animal shelter capital outlay as well as much native county capital projects. To balance the solid waste budget, I have recommended an increase in the monthly fee from $15 to $20 a month. There are an estimated 4,500 landfill accounts. An 88 percent collection rate will result in the budget being balanced. The cost of landfill and convenience site operations continue to increase while grants are decreasing. Article 44 tax must be used for public schools, community colleges, or economic development for the fiscal year 19 budget using fiscal year 18 estimates. $600,000 is being budgeted for the capital reserve fund for future debt that will be incurred on central middle school project. And I would like to express my appreciation to the county Board of Commissioners for their participation and input in the budget process as well as department directors and agency leadership for budget submission in a timely manner.
Okay, thank you for that. And I believe our work session is tomorrow afternoon that we can have a little bit more detailed look at the budget. And all, is there any comments or questions at this time? See, all of us will be back together tomorrow afternoon concerning that budget. Okay, we do have some budget amendments for this year. So if you'll look in your packet, if you'd like me to explain this.
That tomorrow will be.
Okay. Budget Amendment 32. This is to move funds to avoid overages within the Department of Social Services. They had to increase the use of professional services this year for various cases. Or do you wish to do these all as in one motion?
I think we can have them all on a motion.
Budget Amendment 34 is to move funds within the wastewater project to create line items. 35 is to reallocate funds from building grounds salaries, part-time, to their full-time salaries. And those are the three that you have before you.
Okay, do I have a motion concerning these budget amendments? One from DXS, one from, like wastewater, and the others building grounds.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve three budget amendments. Three. Three budget amendments have requested.
Have motions been made?
I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman.
A motion has been made and popularly seconded and in discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Number 32.
Okay.
When I was reading all of this, I'm going to ask, are these dollars already spent or projected to be spent by the end of the year?
I can't. I don't know if I can pull up the system here to tell you if it's to cover our shortage and to increase our shortage that they are expecting.
But they were a surplus in both.
Right, there's already a surplus in the others. They know they're not going to spend all of that. And it's not allowing me to access our financial system right now.
So it's just moving funds from one line item to an all line item?
Oh, you know, at the end of the year, we're getting closer to the end of the year. And I didn't know if this was, I know we have a cleanup at the end.
You'll be having a lot more of the next meeting.
Okay, okay, that was my question.
Any additional questions?
I'll say that about six, a couple things, probably a year, that's the way I'll do it.
Okay, any additional questions? Here are none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All amendments are approved. Okay, personnel forward. Personnel board met, and we would like to require that all Gits drivers have an annual physical. Remember, some of our vehicles are, you do not have to have a CDL license to drive. The van, I mean, some of the vans and some of the cars. And just to be for safety, and I would require all the drivers to have an annual physical. You get a CDL, you have to have a physical. And this would occur, some expense to the county, I believe it's $75 per person?
Yes, but that is all accounted for within her budget.
Yeah, and she had it, and she could cover it in her budget. And what is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I thought it was an excellent idea. And I would make a motion that we approve the recommendation of personnel board on this matter. I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman. And if I recall, also included in some of the information for the drivers, some they take not only an annual drug test, but they take one every six months.
They are subject to random drug testing as, or a couple of other safety steps that position.
CDL or not?
Correct.
Yeah, all the drivers are randomly tested for drugs.
Madam Chair, just to put an audience idea, may I read one sentence in the paragraph there?
Certainly.
This was brought to us by Patrice Lassner, the Gits director. And says, "By approving for all drivers to be required to take an annual physical, it will allow a physician to determine if the individual is still fit to drive, and the physician would evaluate any medication the driver has taken and determine if the medication is in conflict with the work they're required to do." It's just in order to try to keep everybody as safe as possible.
Okay, here are no additional questions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. That passes as well. Okay, next, we have the safety policy program here that has been being worked on. The safety manual that all, we are making sure that all our staff is following the right procedures for safety. This was developed by the Gates County Emergency Management Department. And it, this manual would be in each department and online for them. You could read through it, I mean, you read through it. It has the safety program policy, it has this communication policy, lock eye and tag eye policy, where they can rally points in case of a major disaster, bloodborne pathogens, and accident injury forms that have to be filled out, all in one manual.
Looks to be about 60 pages. I'm going to thumb through it.
Yes. Trying to bring that everybody up to speed, the uniformity and the high I.O. problems are recorded, standardized forms. And for insurance purposes, things have to be handled in a, properly within the numbers of hours if an incident occurs.
One thing that stood out to me was that, and I'm sure, you know, this is professionally done, Commissioner Freeman might want to speak to this, but all the employee rallying points are out in the open. And I actually made a note on it of that, is that the best thing to do when you have a shooter on scene?
I noted when I took this in consideration that that's primarily for the sake of a natural disaster or for an active shooter.
And I assume that they would get a head counting to make sure everybody's accounted for.
And there are other things set in place for an active shooter, the sheriff and his staff work on with.
And it didn't specifically say shooter on scene, the man spoke of that. Okay, thank you, sir.
Took me a while to figure out what the.
Buildings were.
Buildings were. I still have a little concern like one, but it didn't like, I finally recognized all the buildings. When you were looking down from the top counting, it's a little different from up the sky. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I found it to be pretty thorough. And to have it all in one document, I thought was very, very smart. And to have it where it can be seen online by all employees. So I'll make a motion that we approve the safety program and policies manual that sits before us tonight.
Okay.
Second motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion has been made, the second to approve the safety manual with the update, the safety program policy, employment rallying points, hazards, communication policy, lock eye and tag eye policy, bloodborne pathogen policy, and forms.
Madam Chairman, I will, I will add to my amendment if you choose to, that we adopt it. I said approve it.
Adopt it.
Adopt it, I think my view is right.
Okay, and Commissioner Jordan, you will?
Yes, I'll second that as well.
Okay, so is everybody clear on what? Okay, so is everybody clear on what we'll be, board? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes as well as you know honestly. Okay. And now we have a proclamation before us. Commissioner Owens, would you like to read this proclamation for the Vulnerable Adult and Elderly Abuse Awareness Month proclamation?
Yes ma'am, I anticipated that.
Got your glasses on.
I do. Vulnerable Adult and Elder Abuse Awareness Month Proclamation, two thousand eighteen. Whereas North Carolina joins the world in recognizing World Elder Abuse Awareness Day every June fifteenth. And whereas protecting North Carolina's vulnerable and older adults is a community responsibility and all citizens are charged under state law to report suspected abuse, neglect, or exploitation to their local county department of social services. And whereas North Carolina's vulnerable and older adults of all social, economic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds may be targets of abuse, neglect, or exploitation, which can occur in families, long-term care settings, and communities. And whereas in state fiscal year two thousand seventeen, there were twenty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-three reports of abuse, neglect, or exploitation of vulnerable and older adults made to North Carolina's one hundred county departments of social services. And whereas national and international research shows that abuse, neglect, and exploitation of vulnerable and older adults is grossly under-reported. And whereas the state of North Carolina enacted the nation's first elder abuse law and recognizes the need for a comprehensive system of protection for vulnerable and older adults. And whereas mothers and fathers' days are national holidays intended to honor and respect and promote the dignity and well-being of our older citizens. Now therefore, we, the Gates County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Mother's Day through Father's Day, May thirteenth through June seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, as Vulnerable Adult and Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Gates County, North Carolina, and commend observance to all citizens, to be signed by Linda Hopper, Chairman.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt this proclamation for elder abuse, vulnerable adult and elder abuse awareness. And I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion been made and properly seconded and in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. And certainly, there are so many heartbreaking cases of elderly abuse and certainly anything to make shine a light on that problem is beneficial. I skipped over one thing, and that was the the R P O for the. The R F P for the. Yeah, R F P for the audit for next year. If you remember, we had have, we had a problem with our audit this year. Of twenty-four other counties in North Carolina, based on the audit firms that we had hired. And we have received three audit firms responding, that's great. And you've had, came out, would you like to explain? And I would like to clarify, not all twenty-four counties have the same offer that we had, had issues. Okay, Washington County had ours though. Correct. We did receive three responses and based upon the review of the proposals, discussions with other counties, and the price, we are recommending Mauden and Jenkins LLC for fiscal year eighteen. Audit with, if that is completed satisfactory to both of our, if we both agree that it's completed satisfactory, then we can renew for fiscal year nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. The price for fiscal year eighteen will be forty-five thousand dollars.
How much difference does that make to the company last year?
It is the same.
The same.
How many of these people have been in business? They are new in North Carolina, they are out of Georgia. We did talk to someone who's been using them for three years. In North Carolina? Yes, yes, but we did talk to someone who has been using them for three years. Finance officer is new in that position and that it was a municipality. But based upon what she shared, we feel like they could come in and do what is needed. A neighboring county has also just signed with them, and they said they had two of the same people respond to their R F P that we did. And they came to the same conclusion that even though they are new coming to North Carolina, they have participated in some school government training, they've also participated in the North Carolina Finance Officers Training. And that they feel like they will be a benefit based upon what was heard about other audit firms and the price.
Do we know if, if that price includes travel?
It does, it's all-inclusive. If you need anything outside the scope, it will be a hundred and seven dollars an hour.
Did you check the Better Business Bureau?
They've not had any problems.
We checked it.
We've not had any problems with anybody, any of the ones that we received audits from, or proposals from.
Do you know of any other locations in North Carolina that they've established?
Like I said, the one that we spoke with had been with them for three years. And there were, there were.
They have.
They do not have an office here right now. And someone else in our region has already signed with them too? Close to us, yes.
Can I just clarify my question?
Mm-hmm.
My question is, did we check the Better Business Bureau and see if there are any complaints against this company?
No, we have not, but we have talked to other agencies.
I think it's a good idea also, you know, to check from them, Better Business Bureau, just see what complaint they can see. For a lot of times, companies within their state, that they're registered with the Better Business Bureau or they keep track of it. And if there's something there, I think it would be good for us to know about.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a question that we accept this request for proposal audit services.
And it's for one year?
For one year.
With the possibility of additional years?
And I take into fact there that it did not go up, it was supposed to. That's my motion.
Okay, a motion's been made to accept this proposal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion?
Yes, I would ask Commissioner Freeman, if you would just modify this motion to the extent that after county manager checks the Better Business Bureau, if there are no registered complaints, that we can move forward. But if so, certainly make the board aware of that.
We do need to sign this though before the next meeting in order for them to come and audit, or to start our audit. And that is what they have, we didn't talk with them, just to make you aware because they do have other clients as well.
I would not be looking forward.
But you have, how many people did you check with? I spoke specifically with one who's in North Carolina who's been there for three years, others are, others in North Carolina. And one did not return my phone call. Because I told them I had to have a response by Friday, they did not return my phone call. Another one I contacted has just signed with them. And she talked, she shares some information with me that made me very confident that they would have the ability to do this. The next one was fifty-six thousand dollars, they charged an extra hundred and ten dollars an hour. And the response was very mixed on them. The third company was, I don't have it with me, I left that paper in my office, I believe it was seventy-nine thousand dollars. And they did not have positive reviews.
But the thing about it is, you know, checking the Better Business Bureau, anticipating it may not, it may not have any complaint. And certainly the motion would be fine. But if there is something significant, I think it's, it's certainly best industry of, of accounting to know.
Oh, I'm not arguing about that, I'm just letting you know what they have, what they have told me about signing the contract is to make you aware as well.
If there is something significant, I don't, I don't think we would want to sign a contract.
No, I agree.
And so, you know, I would anticipate that it probably would be not. And we could go ahead and be, be admission. But certainly I would be interested in knowing if there was something out there. And we could address that. If there's something significant, I think we would want to prove our bad habit.
What would, now we specifically, what was our deadline for signing the contract?
They'd like for us to submit the first thing by the end of this week. Could, you said they were based in Georgia?
You'll need the chairman's signature or just yours?
No, based on the initial information I have sent them, it's not. Could we make a couple, could you make a couple phone calls? Based upon what I can find right now, I do not see any complaints.
Well, I'm sure the county manager, she's going to sign, she's going to sign that document if, if we have the vote and it passes. Then, then the length of time between now and when she signs that document and submits it, certainly if she sees anything, she's going to say no.
Based upon what I have just found, this business is not, it says it's not Better Business Bureau accredited, but that they do give them an A-plus rating. A plus, pretty good.
Yeah, that's, that's what the Better Business Bureau have to give him, up and answer his question.
Okay, so the motion that you propose is to approve the county manager signing the contract with the, with this firm for our audit for twenty eighteen, nineteen. They have for seventeen eighteen.
Modern.
For the fiscal year. Oh.
For fiscal year, is that.
It will be for the audit of eighteen. Okay, eighteen, nineteen. And the audit will be for seventeen eighteen. Okay, seventeen eighteen. Okay.
So we're in eighteen now.
Yeah, we're in eighteen now. That's for fiscal year seventeen eighteen. We do the audit when it's finished, correct?
We're just getting a name.
Oh yeah, I suppose it's, they're, this, it's not January. Right. Okay, are we prepared to vote?
Yeah.
Okay, all of us, I think we probably, because this is a, a normal, I mean, a significant amount of money, let's have a, we'll poll the board, starting and ending, Commissioner Freeman?
Yes ma'am, certainly in favor of, since I made a motion.
Yes, I'm in favor of approving the audit team that's selected.
Yes.
Yes, so the vote is five zero. Go ahead. Put that out, and hopefully we have great results. That makes life a lot easier for all of us. Okay, anything else come forth, board, board moved comments? Hearing none, any additional citizen's comments? Yes, sir. If you come up and state your name and address?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Celester Parker from one thirty-three Hopple Road. I have one comment on the budget thing, what was the name of the company? That you would just award this thing to?
The budget.
The audit.
Mauden and Jenkins LLC. And that's spelled M A U L D I N.
Okay, then the other thing has nothing to do with the board, but it's just the road.
I know what you're going to say, go ahead.
One thirty, well, from Hopple Road to, I think it's Sandcross, one problem.
Yeah, Sandcross.
I mean, we have a roller coaster there, you know, it's been going on all year. I know that's not the, I guess it's not the city's fault, but it is sure devastating when you drive a little car and you ride on this roller coaster sixty miles an hour. It is not pleasant. And then at least one of the holes that's on the end of the roller coaster is pretty good. And I think that's, I guess that's all I really wanted to say.
And I certainly am very familiar with the roller coaster. But every time I go to landfill.
Yes.
I have it.
Thank you.
And can you name again, sir?
Celester Parker.
Parker?
Yes.
He is a native of Hopple, Hopple, by Eric. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Anyone else?
I have another question.
Okay.
Joe Perfaro, it's a little bit the same address. I was prepared for this statement, but you said you're going to increase the cost of the dumpster, like their terminology. But the, there's a recycling center there, does the, does the county give me money for that recycling? And if it is, how much is it?
The cost of recyc, it's now costing us to recycle. And I do not have the documents from the solid waste meeting that we attended, or that I attended a week and a half ago. But we are not making money off recycling anymore. But we still want you to do it, but it's for the environmental sake, but it has, you know, it's, well. It's China. China, China has refused to accept recycling from the United States. So that has funded the market and the, and the place that we are recycling within Chesapeake. Neither of you remember the name of it? They are, they are now wanting to charge us to take recyclables.
The only difference is, we, whether they're making money on the recycling act, we're having to pay for it, or we're not having to pay for it. We're at, at the rate, the regular garbage is paying for it.
It's still cheaper for us to recycle.
Still about half the rate.
Right.
We're not making money, but it's cheaper to recycle than to, or just throw everything in one dumpster.
The other suggestion I would make is the dump over.
Purdue?
No, I think you're going to want to make rent this hardware.
Okay.
Gates, and they only have one container for green waste. And that fills up real quick, especially during the summer. And they should have at least two, if not three, for green waste.
There's capacity, site issue, and then we are part of a three-county landfill, and there's only so many containers to go around, there's, I believe there's ten sites.
Because when I went there one time, they said I had to go to another site, and that's, that's not, that's not a good answer.
Thank you for recycling, it does help.
It does help.
I'm doing it for you.
And I will say one thing, the recycling center at Hopple, they have paved it. So we do not have to drive through the mud, which is, I'm very thankful for. And it's been wonderful. So they are, we are, they are trying to make improvements on all the sites at all times. And I thought a lot of the grants that we were getting have dried up as well, you know, there were some grants from, I don't know who. There were recycling grants, there were even the scrap tire grants are slowly going away. And white goods, white goods, and the grants for like recycling, I mean, taking in your electronics stuff. All those things have disappeared over time. And, yes.
Just say no if you don't want to, would you like to mention the Covington grant?
I guess I could. The Gates County Historical Society, in conjunction with the County of Gates, has received a twenty-thousand dollar Covington grant for the work, for preservation of the courthouse, the work on the courthouse. It was applied for, and we were able to receive it, and we were very proud of that. Thank you for that help. Ma'am, I did, I did neglect to mention something during our first budget presentation. We will need to have a second meeting in June. And if we meet on the third Monday, as we do every other month, that will be June the eighteenth at seven o'clock.
Why are we here?
Because with next meeting, we will present and have a public hearing, and then we all weigh, that's the.
all weigh, after the public hearing, then we have another meeting to vote on it.
Okay, if everybody wants to check their calendars, the second meeting, we will have a second meeting in June for, June the eighteenth.
Correct.
That is a Monday night, and it'll be at seven o'clock.
Yep.
Thank you, seven o'clock for budget. The public hearing will be on the June six.
June six.
Okay, so June six. On June six, we'll have a public hearing for, on the budget. Okay, now we'll come back to the commissioners' comments, and tell you what, we just started the end of the, end, but we're going to start with Commissioner Felton, and we'll go all the way around and end with Commissioner Freeman, he always gets the first say, and, so we're making them at the end of time.
Well, I appreciate everybody's attendance, I've already heard Linda bragging on she had a Hopple person here tonight, I can see at least two of you will vote, free you all to vote, I see three of you, we've got, I'm glad to have you all, appreciate all the support and, appreciate all the volunteer work that everybody does.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes, indeed, I thank all my colleagues for working together tonight to make this meeting, I thought it was fairly successful, and we appreciate everyone for coming out. I do have one, it's still, my wife, I've got the dorms, and, yes, I've got several myself, Billy, and, 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 we just hope everyone has a good week.
Mr. Jordan, you may not know this, but you get two points for spouse. And a star. Well, it's good to see everybody here tonight, I do want to clear up one thing, if it's not clear, and that's when you hear us talk about an audit and having problems with the audit, there's nothing that we did, so just be, be sure to understand that, nothing that our employees did, nothing that our County Manager did, or the Commissioners, it was an issue with an audit firm, it's the firm who's actually doing our audit, and they had some internal problems with their employees, I believe, was the situation, and again, it, it affected other counties, any, any county, I guess, that was doing business with them. So we hope that we've made a good selection, and so have confidence in, in what we're doing for you. Thank you very much for all the support that you extend to all of us. Thank you very much.
I do thank you for coming, I do appreciate Mr. Parker, we don't, I, people from Hopple don't seem to come this way very much, but I do appreciate your coming, and he's been very faithful over the years, and I can, I must claim, listen Norman back there, he's almost, I can, I must say him from my house, he lives a little bit farther down at thirty-two than I do in Hawthorne Road, but anyway, we'll complain you exiting in Hopple as well. But anyway, well, I thank you for coming, certainly it's always important to have input, and we do take your comments seriously, and we will do some investigating and studying to see what we can, if, see if there's any thing that we need to change or do differently. I do thank all the board members, we have, you know, we work together well, we share ideas, and have a lot of respect for each of them. I would hope you have a safe drive home, watch, might be some public work on the road, so don't do any high declaring, sorry. And listen, Commissioner Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Certainly I'll reiterate what all my fellow Commissioners have said about, I appreciate you being here and participating. When you bring things in front of us, and I want you to know that, and we do say it and we do feel it, we do look at those matters and we do address those, so we certainly welcome and want you to bring them up to us, and then we can chew on, and we can figure out that's what is best for our citizens, and that's what we do, so thank you.
Okay, this town will have a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
I think we had a first and a second, almost out of time. Okay, motion has been made, a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Okay, thank you all.